And they end up getting transferred to the emergency room because the urgent care facility doesn't have the right skill level that they need for what's going on. So combining the two models is very, very efficient. The, the, the fire districts are very excited about this model because it gives them also an alternative place to drop off people rather than to be dependent upon the hospital. So this is a full-fledged emergency room. It's right on Kitsap Way and uh, it was, it's a big deal. It's the first one. There's going to be several more coming to the county.
Is that in the location of the old, where they're currently as a doctor's clinic?
It's, it, where it is, 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 I don't know how to describe it. It used to be a grocery store.
Right.
Right next to Rite Aid and there's Starbucks, it's in Kitsap Way. It's like as you're going.
Yeah, they, they had converted part of it to a clinic and they're.
Yes.
Okay.
And so Valdez was on one side.
So this is an instance of reuse of a older shopping center.
Exactly.
To support new demand.
Yeah, it's, it's, and it. It's a, it's a very good idea.
Why I raised it.
A lot of communities though. Okay. Uh, let's see. Puget Sound Regional Council was on Thursday and we had the honor of meeting the new Secretary of Transportation. Her name is Julie Meredith. Very smart woman. She used to been in charge in some of what's called the mega projects uh, in Wash Dot. She spent her entire career at Wash Dot and she was one of the mega project people, which is the tunnel and the Montlake Cut and some of those huge enormous projects. I think she's very smart and I'm really hopeful that she's going to do a really good job there. So. We had a presentation from Diane Iverson, Paul Duckey. Is Diane here? Diane, Diane, Diane Linius arranged this. Diane, Diane Iverson and Paul Duckey are avid bicyclists and have been in the bicycle community for a long time. They're, they're citizen volunteers. They were really involved with the, the concept of the tunnel of the Johnson Parkway. Smart people really care, very altruistic. And they gave a presentation about what bicycling looks like in Europe, specifically in the Netherlands. And how pedestrians and bicycles really have the right of way and cars do not. A lot of pictures, really interesting ideas that they were presenting was a luncheon meeting. Josh, you were there? It was last Friday, right? Very, very good presentation. I think it was well received. Really got the wheels turning about what some of the things we could do in Paul'sville. We spoke, I spoke to the League of Women Voters on Saturday about affordable housing and we talked, I talked a little bit about the Nordic cottages, which by the chant, by the way, you need to go up there and take a look. They're moving right along. They're looking very, very good. Let's see, what else do I have here? I think that's about it. Oh, no, one more thing. Ryan, we have a new police officer. His name is Ryan Van Zant. He was sworn in, is that yesterday, Ron? Yesterday. And nice young man, just, he came to us from Kitsap County. He used to be a deputy of the county. So. It's been a busy couple of weeks. Anyway, with that, any questions? Okay. Uh, why don't we move questions and concerns to the city council? Does have anything? No?
Yeah, one thing, Mayor, um, coming off of, you know, some of the questions we had about the availability of the federal funds for our Knoll Road transportation project. Can, can you or perhaps City Administrator Gelder just comment a little bit? I, my understanding is that staff has been going through current contracts and determining if we have any sort of risks, risk factors, I guess, in those contracts. And I'm just wondering maybe if we could get just a brief update on that and if not tonight, maybe next week.
Do you have any information?
I don't have any current information, but we can work something up and bring it back.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, all I, I can tell you is what I told you about Puget Sound Regional Council, which is it was a very scary couple of days because we, it's, it's a billion dollars. It was a lot of money. It's for the whole region, Seattle, Tacoma, the whole and Sound Transit, a lot of federal transportation dollars. And we were very concerned and the guidance that we heard first is not to worry. Then it was, well, we really want to review the contracts again that you've let, which made very, everybody very nervous because of the potential for delay. And then we heard back that, no, we don't want to do that either, that everything was fine and they were moving forward. So. That's Puget Sound Regional Council. There's a little bit of a concern about HUD. There was a news report that came out from King Five TV that said that HUD was a they were going to close the HUD offices in Seattle, the regional offices. I got ahold of Heather Blau, who is the Executive Director of Housing Kitsap. She got ahold of the head of HUD in Seattle and they had heard the rumors too about closing the offices, but they hadn't had any real assurance. They didn't, weren't, they didn't know. They hadn't heard anything. The, the biggest part about HUD for us, and you guys maybe can speak a little bit about this. I don't, I don't know, but HUD controls our vouchers for our housing and there's a lot of HUD vouchers that is controlled between Housing Kitsap and the Bremerton Housing Authority. And so, and this is the poorest of the poor. These are the most vulnerable people we have in our community. I can't imagine them messing around with that. But we don't know. I mean, we, I don't think anybody really knows what the next steps are. So.
Yeah.
I hope that helps.
It, it does. I guess, you know, just as a council member, I'm feeling like I would like some sort more reassurance that we've gone through the contracts. For me, Mayor, it's the ones that come to mind are transportation. Some of the grant funding that we've received for our Housing Health and Human Services area. And, you know, I, I just would feel better, and I think my colleagues would too, if we knew that those have gone, been gone through and we've flagged things that we may, you know, have some concerns about, or we're, we're good to go on in most of these areas. And I, and I understand there's a lot of uncertainty really, you know, there's no uncertainty perhaps anywhere. But I, I'm just trying to do my due diligence as a council member here. And any sort of additional information or reassurance staff can give us regarding current levels of funding or future projects that we have on, you know, coming up would be much appreciated. Thank you.
I think we're just going to have to be watching on a weekly basis and see what the impacts are. Fortunately, the Knoll Road construction is dirtwork and not, we're not going vertical. Just as a case in point, here in the Northwest, if we're going vertical and we are, have a steel skeleton, that steel comes from British Columbia.
Right.
And so, so does a lot of our timber for construction. And so in this environment, when people are bidding, they're bidding, they don't know what to bid. And so they're going to bid high because they're trying to price the risk. The other side of the equation back to HUD, I, I would be concerned, I think we need to be watching is if we have see big staffing cuts, it'll slow down the process. The law might not change. There still might be money available. The, but the ability to process grants could grind, grind to a halt, no matter what agency is. So I, I'm, I'm I think we're going to be in a wait and see for a long time on this as the winds continue to evolve.
The real problem we have is that so much of the federal money comes through and then it comes through state coffers and then heads to the local level. So, you know, we could be hit from multiple directions. I mean, all, I think we have, we have some good contacts that we can call, you know, we, we're well positioned to talk with HUD, for instance, and we're well positioned to speak with Wash Dot and we're well positioned to speak with, you know, both our transportation and our social service infrastructure, which is good. But it's, but it's going to be difficult.
Maybe to Doug's point, Mayor, given, you know, how fluid things are, maybe we just take a few minutes during this portion of our agenda to just ask if we, you know, are we aware of any changes? You know, have we heard anything more about the Seattle HUD office? Have we, you know, that, that might be just sort of a good exercise to get into.
Yeah, fully agree. I mean, just even things like the Education Department shutting that down. I think Bremerton School District is maybe fifteen percent federally funded. Central's ten. I think we're about seven or eight percent up here. But if that all of a sudden gets gummed up or eliminated, you know, it's not just us. It's our entire community is going to have to flex to figure this out. So. Unfortunate times from that standpoint for, to do proper planning.
Right. Well, the most concerning thing I saw really right away is the idea that there was selling the federal assets. I mean, you know, you have, you have those buildings downtown where, where all the office structures are. I mean, you know what it's like to have move in, move an office around or lose that kind of physical infrastructure. So, I mean, we don't, nobody knows. And so I promise if, if anything, anything important comes my way, I will certainly let you guys know. So. And everybody just pray. And also I'm going to say something I said at PSRC, which is one of the beauties of local government is we're nimble and we adapt. Okay. We've been doing that ever since. That's what local government does. Because we're always looking to alternative sources to help us do what we need to do. We've been doing this for a long time. So we are nimble and we adapt. And that's what we'll do as, as we move forward. So. Okay, with that, yes, go ahead.
I do have a comment for anybody who's watching and is maybe a little confused because at our last meeting, we said we were going to be talking about parking and taking a vote on implementation option three. That has been moved to the March nineteenth meeting and we will be considering implementation option three, which involves enforcement and signage immediately and paid parking just over a year from now.
It is not on the agenda today because we're kind of spare, we're, we need the rest of the council here, number one. And number two, that particular phase, the third, what is it? Option three required a little more homework than we needed to do so that, that we had to do before we could bring it back forward. So we moved, it'll be on the third Wednesday this month. Okay? Okay. There isn't anything going on or anything. It's a little busy. The next thing on our agenda is the legislative briefing and this is our lobbyist extraordinaire. And then he's going to tell us a whole bunch more stuff that's going to make us scared, right? Yeah, yeah.
Everything's not good. Let's see here. Yep, no, I got it. Thank you. Mayor, Council, for the record, Brian McConaughey, lobbyist for the City of Pauls Bowe down in Olympia. So. What I thought I'd do is I'd give you a quick little summary of kind of what things are happening, how things are going down there in Olympia and then go over a couple of bills that might be of interest to you and if that's okay. And then always questions are always allowed at any time. So. So we are exactly halfway through the legislative session. Today was day fifty-two of the hundred and five day session. And we have gone through two policy cutoffs. The first was February twenty-seventh. No, uh, February twenty-first and then the last one was February twenty-eighth. And then our next one will be March twelfth. This is, this is where the, in the legislative process, bills have to make it through a certain stage of the, of the process for them to keep moving along. Unless they're determined to be necessary to implement the budget. And that's always kind of a guessing game. A lot of times if it has to do with revenue or a new very expensive program, then sometimes it will stick around as necessary to implement the budget. Let's see, speaking of budgets, the operating budget, you've all heard that we're looking at pretty significant shortfalls in that, anywhere from, I've heard as low as seven billion to as high as seventeen billion. So it's a pretty broad range and it depends on who you ask is really kind of where that answer comes from. One of the things that will be happening is on March eighteenth, we'll have a clearer picture as the Office of Budget Management will come out with their budget projections for the, for the current cycle. And so budgets won't be, the legislature won't develop their budgets until after the eighteenth. So we'll probably see budgets both in the operating and the transportation and the capital budgets drop probably the last week of March, March twenty-fifth, twenty-fourth, right around there. So you may have also heard that Governor Ferguson introduced a proposal last week to, to generate four billion dollars in cuts at the state level. That's on top of Governor Inslee's three billion dollar proposal, cut proposal. So you're looking at seven billion, which doesn't get us to the probably twelve billion that we need to get to. And so whilst folks on one side of the aisle are pushing for more cuts and streamlining, folks on the other side of the aisle are talking about new revenue sources and it can be anywhere from a wealth tax, which is kind of quietly gone away. It's not being talked as much to a payroll tax, similar to what the City of Seattle has, to having even as little as storage facilities being charged, sale stacks on their, on their sales or the, of their rentals. And so on the transportation budget, we're also looking at a shortfall of a billion dollars, a little bit more than a billion dollars. Since the twenty twenty-four projection, fuel tax revenue has gone down by three hundred and thirty-two million dollars or ten percent. And so while while the number of miles are still being driven are the same, you're seeing more electric vehicles and more hybrids and more fuel efficient vehicles, which are causing gas tax revenues to continue to decline. And then also we're seeing large project cost increases in the hundreds of millions of dollars. And Mayor, you're probably familiar with those briefings at the PSRC. And so that's, that's where we're at. One, one good, bid, good, good news in the capital budget, we had over seventy-four million dollars allocated for the Pauls Bowe Western Washington Branch Campus Facility. And that was introduced at the start of session. And so that puts us in a good position for when capital budgets come out at the end of March, fingers crossed that this is Western. Yep, exactly. So the, the Pauls Bowe facility and, yeah, Western on the Peninsulas. And so now without any questions, if there are any questions, I'll jump to a couple of pieces of legislation. I'll start off with revenue bills. House Bill thirteen thirty-four revises, this is AWC's top priority. This is the one that revises the property tax cap up to three percent tied to inflation, providing a more flexible local option. Mr. Gelder mentioned the House Bill twenty fifteen. One of the things I'd add to that is that Governor Ferguson is really set on having about a hundred million dollars put forth for public safety and for hiring more law enforcement officers. And twenty fifteen kind of ties into that a little bit too, where cities that take the councilmatic, one tenth of one percent increase in their sales tax for public safety, they would be eligible to apply for a hundred million dollars worth of grants with the mindset that, yes, the state can fund you enough money to hire a police officer, but how are you going to pay for the ongoing costs of that?
It's a, so, so they're asking us to do councilmatically a one percent, one ten to one percent and then.
For public safety.
Okay. But it's councilmatic, correct?
Councilmatic, exactly.
Good, thank you.
And there's some discussion too, because some cities have already enacted that sales tax increase through the vote of the people. There's some question as to whether the language can be adjusted so that those folks would qualify for the grant program as well. House or Senate Bill fifty sixty, this is another law enforcement one. This is specifying that a hundred million in grants for hiring law enforcement officers. The competitive grants would cover seventy-five percent of the costs up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand for up to three years. So this is, this is in line with Governor Ferguson's request. The Senate bill was amended to, for the grants to cover co-responders. I'm sure Kimberly would be glad to hear that. And add criteria a city must meet to qualify for the funding. Senate Bill five seven seven five allows until January the first twenty twenty-eight, a county or city legislative authority to impose the public safety sales and use tax without voter approval. So again, this is another law enforcement one. You can tell that that's kind of a big deal down in Olympia. And it expands how local governments may use revenue from the public safety sales and use tax and the criminal justice sales and use tax. And then House Bill eighteen sixty-seven would provide, this is one of the REIT bills. There's a couple of REIT bills that are down there. That's the real estate excise tax. There's currently two options that municipalities can pursue for the REIT, REIT one and REIT two. There's talk of creating a REIT three, but that's, that hasn't been formulated. Actually, this is, this is the one that's proposing the REIT three. And so it would be a point five percent REIT increase for affordable housing. The county would have first dibs on this. They would have until January first, twenty twenty-seven to implement. And if they don't, then cities would have the option, option to impose it by the vote of the people. So it would not be councilmatic. It'd be a vote of the people. The AWC and other cities are arguing that that should be councilmatic. Unfortunately, it's in the title that it has to be a vote of the people. So we don't have much flexibility in that. That's why there was hope that another REIT three bill would be introduced that would allow for a little bit more flexibility. So that's where we sit on revenue generation. There are bills that have not been dropped yet that will be focused on bills that were for the city level revenue generators. The bills that focus on revenue for statewide haven't been introduced yet. Well, because again, those are necessary to implement the budget so they won't be held to any policy deadlines or cutoff deadlines. So any questions with that?
How bad is it down there?
It's pretty ugly. And, and, and you add to it, Councilmember McVeigh's questions about federal funding. And, you know, the, the Medicaid Medicare reimbursement is the primary focus right now. But you know, transportation and so the, the federal component is, is definitely stressing out folks a lot more than just the current deficits that we're dealing with in, in operating and transportation. Yes?
Brian, there were Representative Nance, I think had introduced Ferry Funding Bill. Can, can you give us, did that make it, did the other, get a hearing? Is it still moving?
Yeah. So currently right now, we're in a position where bills are being heard on the House floor and being voted on on the House floor. And so there's a lot of floor action that's been going on. But to your question, Councilmember Nance introduced the Mosquito Fleet Bill is what it's called. I don't know the, the House Bill number for it, but that is continuing to stay alive. I think there is questions about whether money will be tied to it or not. Because the primary thing that the bill does is it allows for basically folks to replicate the Kitsap transit passenger only ferry model. And so it'd open up to additional communities to be able to do that. There was some grant funding that was tied to it. I, I think that that probably won't, the grant funding won't survive, but the, but the language will.
Okay. And then at the proper time, if, I want to make sure that we can all get engaged and send messages to representatives at the proper time to support the Western Washington, Better City of the Capital requests. So if you could please make sure that, you know, yeah, we want to, you know, I, I want to make sure that I fire up some, some emails and stuff like that. Others do too, I think.
Yeah. And our, our delegation is very, very supportive and I'd, I'd like to highlight Senator Hanson's involvement in getting that money in the capital budget.
He's been really good.
And then there was some risk, you mentioned the transportation budget hole. I know Councilmember Stern, being on the Public Works Board there, they, they had a, they had a surplus. There was some concern that the state may come, be coming in to sweep some of those funds. Can you give us an update on that?
Yeah. Unfortunately, what I'm hearing is that they're looking about a hundred million dollar sweep of the Public Works Assistance Fund.
Well, they always get in trouble. They sweep that fund.
Yeah.
They do.
Yeah.
They've done that over and over.
Yeah. And I don't, I don't see that changing at all. And it's just one way to kind of fill the budget gap right now. It's happened in the past.
Talk about the shelter bill. Where is it?
Uh, which shelter bill?
The one that's, they can put shelters on our public places.
Let's see here. Oh, that's thirteen eighty. Yeah, this is the Safe Spaces Bill. This creates a significant new restrictions on cities' ability to regulate camping in public spaces. Requires that any city law that regulate the acts of sitting, lying, sleeping, or keeping warm and dry outdoors on public property that is open to the public be objectively reasonable as to time, place, and manner. Basically, you can't, you can't develop a no camping policy that would keep folks from sleeping on any public space.
Any public space. And I want to say that again. Any public space. Like here?
I think outdoors.
Well.
Yeah.
Does it say outdoors?
Good point.
Yeah. No, it doesn't, does it? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I know. And that bill is still moving. So.
Is that whether you have a, a shelter available or not?
No, there's been, there's been discussion about, there's been discussion about putting language in there that if you do have a shelter available, then you can enact policy. But it's, it's a tough go right now. And due to the makeup of the legislature, bills like this have a better chance of moving along than they would have in the past. And so, yeah, just be ready.
I said that they should just put the first shelter in the middle of the legislative floor. Or, or you know, the judicial chambers, right? I mean, they're all public spaces.
Right. How about the, the bills to, what's the word I'm looking for? Sorry. Cap rent?
Yeah, the rent stabilization bills. Those are still moving through. I provided the mayor an update as she had a public meeting coming up that she needed to be aware of that. And the bills are still plugging right along. The, the bill is naturally going to have an easier path through the House. And so the House bill is the vehicle that's moving ahead. The Senate bill stalled out where it's at, but it was expected that the House would be a lot more lenient on the bill and be more likely to move it forward. And so we could see it run into some problems when it gets to the Senate.
They're afraid of it. I mean, at least this was my sense. So some of them are afraid of it because they don't really know what it will do. I mean, you know, it's one thing to stabilize rents, but if it stabilizes it to the point where nobody becomes a landlord because they can't recoup their value, it, it gets to be pretty afraid. And my sense is enough of them are afraid of it. They don't understand the long-term impacts of it.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it'll be, it'll be interesting to see if that passes, how that gets implemented. Couple of other land use bills that are of interest, fifty-five oh nine. This would require cities to allow childcare centers in all but industrial, light industrial and open space zones. So just, yeah, so it'd be residential. And then House Bill ten ninety-six, this is a lot splitting bill. This would require cities to set up an administrative process to approve a parcel split without a public hearing when certain conditions are met. And then there were ten, ten conditions that were listed. So really trying to encourage cities to well, actually it would require cities to allow for lot splitting to occur. House Bill eleven seventy-five, this is the Neighborhood Cafe Bill. This would require cities and towns to allow neighborhood stores and neighborhood cafes to be permitted in residential zones. Cities may regulate parking, limit the hours of operation and establish additional regulations as necessary. Neighborhood stores and cafes must be permitted to operate for at least twelve consecutive hours. And it's a, Neighborhood Cafe is an establishment that has at least five hundred square feet of gross floor area. House Bill eleven eighty-three, this one's a complicated omnibus development regulation bill that adds six new sections to the Growth Management Act. It also includes problematic parking requirements. It requires all cities and towns to comply with two of the six new elements. And let's see here, jump to another one. House Bill eleven ninety-five, this is the STEP Housing Bill. STEP stands for shelters, transitional housing, emergency housing, and permanent supportive housing. This requires that comprehensive plans, development regulations, and permit processes must not deny or preclude STEP projects. Requires Commerce to inform, enforce requirements by withholding city revenue, including sales, motor vehicle, liquor, and other taxes.
Well, we got that one beat. We're already doing STEP.
There we go.
Oh, good.
Good shit. Good. And then we talked about the Safe Spaces Bill thirteen eighty that allows for anybody to be on public spaces overnight. And then House Bill fourteen forty-three requires And then House Bill fourteen forty-three requires cities to authorize up to, this is the fun one. Uh, this requires cities to authorize up to two mobile homes, tiny homes, RVs, and other temporary structures as permanent living spaces per residential lot. That means that every residential lot would, uh, be allowed to have up to two RVs, tiny homes. Pop-up campers. On, on every single lot. There, there is some language about, um, it, it needing to have a consistent water source and, uh, potentially tying into the, um, properties, uh, sewer, uh, and gray water, uh, deal. I see a question.
Could you operate? A cafe out of the RV?
Is it five hundred square feet?
Yeah. My HOA is gonna.
There he goes.
Okay, go ahead. Question about that, though. I mean, does state law supersede HOA, local HOA?
Uh, that's a good question. I would have to look into the preemptive component of that. Uh, I'm sure the HOA community would be up in arms. I mean, we're kind of up in arms a little bit about it already, but I'm sure the HOA community would definitely be even more up in arms. And the frustrating thing is that, that as the bill was moving, it went through the Fiscal Committee and it started out as just one RV per lot. And then in the Fiscal Committee, it got amended to two RVs per lot. So, and, and, yeah, I, I mean, the one good thing is that you would have to have at least one permanent residential, uh, building on there. So, so that's kind of where we're at on the fund, uh, land use bills, uh, that most impact the city.
Brian, do you have any good news?
Well, I'll jump back to the Western Washington capital budget request. Uh, we do have two, uh, additional capital budget requests that we have submitted. Uh, one for two hundred thousand dollars for the North Kitsap Recovery Center. And then another for four hundred thousand for the first phase of the Nordic Lodges. So we won't know on those until, uh, probably the end of March.
Question.
Do you have any update on S B, where did I put it? Five zero two zero, that's the exemption, the property tax for people over age seventy-five?
I do not have a, I can do a quick look, see.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just curious, I'm like balancing that with cities' expanding tax and then rent and.
They actually have something that we're, no property tax over the age of seventy-five?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah, so that's fifty twenty?
Uh, five zero two zero S B, uh, property tax exemption for.
And of course it's dead.
Okay.
Yeah, so it, uh, it stalled out in ways and means. It, it could be brought forward. Let me just see who the sponsor is, because that can tell you a lot. Oh, no, it won't go forward.
I was just curious, because, you know, balancing these different, how these bills interact with each other, and if it's dead, then it doesn't matter.
Yeah, and, and I think that if you do see property tax increases of some sort, there will be, there will be a push to create more exemptions, um, and, and go from there. But whether those take place, uh, will be.
You know, um, any other questions for Brian? You've been doing really good work. Thank you, my friend. We really appreciate it. I'm, I'm, I'm really kind of halfway appalled at some of the stuff that they're putting. Don't they understand that we're building houses on forty-five hundred square feet? Okay, the lots in the city of Paulsbow are really small.
Yeah.
So it's, it's just pretty stunning that they're so out of touch.
Yeah, and, and as I do weekly, I'll give you an update after the March twelfth cutoff. And hopefully some of these land use bills have, are gone by the wayside. Yeah, exactly. So, as always, it's a pleasure to represent Paulsbow, and I appreciate the opportunity. So, thank you.
Final questions for Brian. Any questions? Thank you.
Great work. Thank you.
Safe travels.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have the Kitsap County Block Grant Program, twenty twenty-six through twenty thirty consolidated plan presentation, and this is our friends from Kitsap County. And thank you for being patient with us tonight. I, I really appreciate, you know. Yeah, well, we'll drag out some chairs here. We need three, right? That's all right, it'll live. Um, why don't you guys go ahead and introduce yourself, and then we'll go from there, okay?
I'm Doug Washford, Kitsap County Human Services.
And I'm Shannon Bowman, from Kitsap County Block Grant Office.
And Bonnie Tusk, Kitsap County Block Grant.
And I want to say to you that I've known these folks for some time, and these are really hardworking people that, that do some amazing work for the county, so. Go forward and let's see what you've got. Here's your program. Let's, tell us the story.
Well, thanks for having us here to present on the, um, it's federal funds, so that's a little bit on that. Um, but the Consolidated Plan twenty twenty-six, twenty thirty is what we're, um, here to discuss with you.
There we go. So we could probably turn some of these lights down.
Okay.
You're right behind me.
There we go. So we will go through the funds involved in the consolidated planning process, what a consolidated plan is, what our planning timeline looks like, how funds are allocated annually, and how you can contribute to this process. So the funds involved, um, we have two federal sources of funds, Community Development Block Grant and, um, the Home Investment Partnership Funds. C W G, we receive approximately, um, a million dollars annually. And that goes throughout the county excluding the city of Burmerton. Home is roughly seven hundred and fifty thousand. And then that pot is split between Kitsap County as a whole, excluding the city of Burmerton, and then the city of Burmerton gets a twenty-nine percent set aside. And then we work together with our, our local Affordable Housing Tax Funds, the C F Funds. And those, um, together, all of those funds are part of the annual application process for housing acquisition and rehabilitation.
Those are document recording fees to see if, yes.
Okay, yep, one ten to one percent. Public service projects, public facilities, and economic development. All serving low and very low-income individuals. So Kitsap County qualifies for the federal funds together with the cities of Port Orchard, Paulsbow, and Bainbridge Island. Qualifies at what HUD calls an urban county. So every three years, we have to go through a qualification process. And so we will be reaching out again this year, Mayor, to, um, for the renewal of the interlocal agreement. So the consolidated plan is a five-year plan, um, that we developed. It's a head requirement. We developed it jointly with the city of Burmerton. It describes community need and outlines priority uses and funding strategies that drive our funding awards during that five-year process. It includes, um, several documents, but, um, as we put it together, there's a needs assessment and a housing market analysis. And we use the available data along with community input, stakeholder input, input from our local governments to identify needs and develop a strategic plan. These plans that you see up here, um, are, are, they're all documents that tie back to the consolidated plan. So the policy, um, policy plan is an annual plan that we develop. It guides our applicants as they work through the application process, providing policies and procedures for funding awards. The Annual Action Plan is our application to HUD for federal assistance for projects that are awarded C W G and home funds. The CAPER is our annual report to HUD. It's due every year by the end of March. So we're working on our twenty twenty-four CAPER now. It's a consolidated annual performance and evaluation report. It tells HUD how the county is meeting the strategies and goals in the consolidated plan. So we are still working on the twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-five consolidated plan. So we will be reporting on that through next year. And then the Citizen Participation Plan, that describes the HUD, the community involvement process for these federal funds. The timeline for the consolidated plan, so we're, we started working on it right at the beginning of the year. We're in the data gathering stage at this point. Meeting with all the local jurisdictions, we have a community survey open, discussing, uh, getting information from local agencies, service providers, and housing providers. Um, and then looking at data provided from HUD and other studies and reports. Then we will move into setting the priorities based on all of that information. So next month, we'll start setting our priorities and work towards, um, putting those in our policy plan and putting out our RFPs and NOFA's and receiving public comment. So the policy plan that will include the priorities will be published in May. Will open for comment period, and we'll have a public hearing in early June. Then our coordinated grant cycle will also open in May. Just with the, uh, publication of the policy plan and the RFP, grants will, uh, open, the cycle opens on mid-June. Applicants have about a month to submit applications. And then, um, the final, I'm sorry, the, uh, funding recommendations will be published in September with a public, public hearing in October. And then the plan will go to HUD in November. So the final consolidated plan with the one-year action plan is due to HUD by November fifteenth. So how can you participate? We have, as I mentioned, we have a survey open right now. It's on our website. We'll have a slide here at the end with information on it. We have presented to Port Orchard, and now you all. We will be presenting next week to the Board of County Commissioners and City of Bainbridge Island. And then, um, providing information at the, um, Continuum of Care and other, um, meetings. So as I mentioned, the coordinated grant process works alongside the consolidated plan. We have our annual process. It's a competitive process. Policy plan will be posted, as I mentioned, in May, along with the RFPs. The coordinated piece of the application processes that we bring together several different funding sources that utilize, um, the same online application platform and, uh, um, one website where we all post information. So, um, that includes, uh, the C W G and home funding, our C F Grant Funds, uh, mental health tax funds, and our homeless housing grant funds, along with the city of Burmerton, C W G. The Capital Grant Recommendation Committee, um, is what we bring together for C W G, home, and C F Funds. They have representatives from each city, each commissioner district, and one at large. There's also a Services Grant Recommendation Committee that will look at the homeless housing grant funds. And we will be reaching out, again, Mayor, for, um, appointments to that, those committees.
Never do on time, I'm sorry.
Sorry, what's, uh, NOFA stand for?
Notice of Funding Availability.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so as I mentioned during the timeline, grant applications will open in June, um, due in mid-July. So then the staff will determine project eligibility. Staff and our Grant Recommendation Committee will evaluate and score applications. And, um, staff will do a presentation with the Grant Recommendation Committee. The committee will deliberate and make the funding recommendations, and those will be forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners at, with the public hearing. And again, those would be then included in the annual action plan to HUD. Let's just highlight some of the projects that have been funded through the coordinated grant process. As I mentioned, there are several different funding sources, so, um, capital projects, there's the Nordic cottages, Y W C A's moral manor. Martha and Mary has received different, um, grants over the years for, um, one of them's one of the more recent, um, was the parking lot and system upgrade. Housing Kitsap was awarded funds for twenty twenty-five for, uh, Kingston Ridge Route Project. And then Peninsula Community Health received some mental health funds for the Homeward Bound. And then countywide programs, we found weatherization, housing kits up, single-family rehab, young payment assistance through community frameworks, and the best business education support and training program. So those are countywide programs. And then this is a link to our survey. It's also available, you can go to our website, um, and access it there. So with that, I will open it up for questions.
Have you guys heard anything from HUD?
No, um, we belong to a couple organizations. I was on a call the other day. They, that executive committee, so it's, and they said they, um, they, they're, uh, members of their executive committee were meeting with staffers on Capitol Hill, just trying to educate them on what it means if you get rid of workers that are necessary at HUD in order for the funding to flow. But beyond that, they said they heard there's talk of a continuing resolution being floated around through the end of the fiscal year, which may be a good thing for twenty twenty-five. It would hold funding, um, stable for, for this year. But expect next year to not look so good. We need our, all of these plans are submitted to our regional office in Seattle, um, our annual report. So I, if, uh, if Seattle closes and Oregon closes and California closes and everything's going through Alaska, um, things will be really slow. And so we don't, we don't know.
It's, it's, it's tough times.
It's really tough times.
Tough times, yeah. Go ahead, Gary.
Can you tell us the, um, the amount of funding available for the block grant program? Has that stayed fairly stable, up and down? Comment about that?
The last few years, it's just minor fluctuations. I mean, you know, if you go back to the early two thousands, we got a lot more money, and then it dropped. You know, the recession came and things, things changed. But it, it kind of started to slowly climb, and then it's, I would say it's been stable the last few years. But I, I would expect that we're gonna see cuts next year for sure.
And the, uh, request you're getting from the city of Paulsbow, can you, uh, is there anything that we can do better or provide you more of, um, to help make decisions? Are we, I guess I'm just kind of looking how competitive we are compared to other jurisdictions in terms of, you know, what we're doing, what we're requesting funds for, how we're presenting it to you. If there's anything, uh, that you can help us comment on that, would be much appreciated.
Well, I can speak for the, um, capital application side for C W G, home, C F. The last application we received was Nordic, and it, um, it came through, it was fully funded.
Have you seen the pictures of it?
It's, um, well, I saw this telling Shannon, we need to drive, drive by there. We're really excited to finally see, um, in addition to that one, there's several. In addition to that one, there are several others that were kind of on hold for a while. And there's a lot of good housing projects happening right now, so that's exciting. It's, it's really needed. But I can't speak to other, any other funds, so.
So questions about the block grant funding process? It's quite a process. I mean, it, it used to be, remember when it was all a KRCC and all that? So it's, yeah, it's, it's quite a process and they, those guys, you guys worked really hard. So any, any questions? Any questions?
I have one more. Are there particularly type, particular types of projects that you're wanting to emphasize over the next few years compared to any changes? And sort of, you know, what you would like to see or where you're trying to drive things towards?
Well, well, I mean, housing is, I mean, the data supports housing. The survey is showing comments coming back that homeownership support for providing assistance for homeownership housing is, is a big thing. So CDBG and home bring a lot of federal regulations. They don't make it very easy to develop projects. It's, our pots, as I mentioned, are pretty small. And so it doesn't, you get above 200 or 250,000 invested in a project and it just layers on all types of regulations. So knowing that we're probably going to see some significant cuts, what it could look like for staffing at our local level or what it means for folks trying to put projects together. I think we'll have to consider all of those things as we look at what makes sense for our funding. We, we also like to see where can our funds fill gaps between other local funds that are available? Because, you know, it's nice to be able to provide a source of funds that others can't, can't access. So all of those things I think will weigh in. But I, yeah, I mean, housing will definitely be, be up there.
Thank you.
Okay, so any questions? You know, thank you guys for coming and presenting to us. We appreciate it, appreciate it. And I will, I will send you some pictures of the Nordic cottages and we're going to have a ribbon cutting here in a couple of months. They're, they're moving right along, it'll be this summer.
That'll, that, it's exciting.
Yes, it is.
If you're on Facebook, the mayor has a picture of Nordic cottages on her Facebook page.
Contact information, if there's any questions or follow-ups or anybody needs additional info, she does send email. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thanks for coming.
Okay, so now we're going to move on to update from Housing, Health and Human Services, 2024 numbers and Q, quarter one issues. And this is Kim.
Good evening, Council.
Evening.
I would love to introduce, I was going to make a bad joke first. With all of the bad news and uncertainty and talk of federal changes. As some of you know, I have been with my husband for a long time. We celebrated our 40th year anniversary recently. We got into a very rare fight last night because he watched the address to council and he described it in a word I didn't like and I haven't spoken to him since.
Don't cross.
Don't, don't talk politics with your spouse, it's a very bad.
So one of the few things that is frightening, yeah, but, no, to the Congress. One of the, one of the few happy things right now that I keep coming back to is my new assistant, my fiscal and admin assistant Laura Fodell, she joined me two months ago.
Yeah.
Has just been such a wonderful addition to H3, is helping me with budget issues corresponding with folks that we need to talk to on a day-to-day basis. And unbelievably, it's somebody that's good at administration and also has a high level of interest in what we're doing at the Recovery Center and the Recovery Cafe, so.
And she lives right across the fence from me, she watches my goats, so. She's one of the new neighbors. Yes, my goats need to be watched.
Okay, I am here tonight to do a quick PowerPoint presentation to give you an update on what we have been up to in H3 last year and now in quarter one, let's see, slideshow. Sorry. Could take one and pass it on me?
Oh, sure.
Thank you. Perfect, thank you very much. I was delighted that the Kitsap Sun did a story about our new cafe services this week. There's our staff member Julia serving up some of Summer's homemade food. It's something I'll talk about in my presentation, very proud of the new cafe service. Just a quick reminder for the public, the Housing, Health and Human Services Department considers matters related to the health and wellbeing of Paulsboro residents with an emphasis on vulnerable populations. We've been around since 2020. Focus areas in our department is affordable emergency and supportive housing, low barrier behavioral health services, public health and equitable access to health services and services for individuals with low and limited income across age groups with a focus on our vulnerable seniors. Of all the things that you all have been talking about tonight, I think what hits closest to home for H3 is the possibility of Medicaid cuts. The services we provide at the Recovery Center are to people that typically are Medicaid recipients. Something like 90% of our clients are enrolled in Medicaid. It will have very dramatic effects if that funding is changed. Okay, a very high-level overview of things that H3 was working on last year and continues to work on this year. As the mayor has mentioned, Nordic cottages are, are looking great, they're ahead of schedule. We won't say the other thing that we're hoping, but. The goal here is that we have attractive, safe and permanent affordable housing for older adults with incomes under 30% of the area median income, which here in Kitsap would be under $35,000 a year. We're looking to house people that are the lowest of low incomes and we're hoping we can do so by this fall. Working with partners both at the county and on Bainbridge Island on an intergovernmental step housing project that's being funded by the Department of Commerce. Council might recall that we received a $20,000 grant to run an intergovernmental step housing group. Council member Newell has been a very important member. The hope here is that by combining forces, we can find areas where we can work together on supportive housing, shelter, transitional housing, emergency housing. And to that end, we ran an RFP a couple of weeks ago to find a consultant that could do a needs assessment and help us with a prioritization plan. After a competitive process, we selected a firm called Eco Northwest with a lot of experience doing needs assessments here in Kitsap County. We'll be working with the mayor and city administrator to get a contract in place that will not be coming to council because it is already in our budget. Coming back to council with a report from Eco Northwest on a steps needs assessment, I'm, I'm going to hope in May of this year. A quick reminder that we have lots of community partnerships, this is a partial list. Nelson House Recovery Resource, I'm sorry, Recovery Residence being run by Gambit Recovery. All beds are filled, we're helping six men sustain their recovery. The Kingston House is a house run by Kitsap Homes of Compassion for Women and Their Children that are looking for a sober living environment. We continue to work with the Blue Bills, thanks to council support, to provide home repair service for low-income residents throughout Paulsboro. And finally, this is something that mayor and I have overlapping interests in. I am also working with St. Michael's Medical Center, Paulsboro Fire Department and the Saquamish Tribe to think about a countywide opioid response and how we can be more collaborative and more in sync across the county. After fire encounters somebody experiencing an overdose, what's the next step? How do we make sure that person's connected to medications and treatment? And, and don't fall out of that cycle back into use. So I'm, I'm really encouraged by the conversations that are happening between these, these entities and very glad that Paulsboro is a part of it. And finally, the focus of our attention at H3 is definitely the Recovery Resource Center. Our numbers are growing quickly. We helped about 200 unique individuals last year. We're already well over 100 in the first couple of months in 2025. We have a lot of repeat folks coming in. So even though it was 200 unique individuals in 2024, it was still 80 to 90 visits a month of, of people coming in. So we're definitely not at capacity yet, but we're getting busier all the time. We have a new partnership with the Saquamish Tribe, as you all know, will, will expand our ability to offer substance use disorder treatment, counseling, eventually perhaps prescriptions for opioid use disorder and nursing services to be determined. And as I mentioned before, we launched our cafe in February, some great coverage from the Kitsap Sun. We are not running a simple lunch service, this is not just a place to go and eat. The point behind this cafe that will eventually become a recovery cafe is to encourage community responsibility, job training, education, and most of all sustained recovery. So consider it as, as meals with a purpose and it's off to a great start.
I just want to make a comment that I saw the article from the Kitsap Sun and, you know, I was reading through it thinking I knew most all the information. Well, I did not catch, I don't know if it was said before, but if we, if our cafe is approved as a recovery cafe, it would be the first in the nation run by a city. Which I just felt.
Isn't that neat?
So inflated with pride. I just thought that was amazing.
And again, it's little Paulsboro, you know, doing things.
Leading the way, I love it.
Previous slide, Kim, you noted the Nordic cottages project. Do we have any sense of how many people have applied for those eight units at this point?
We have not, I shouldn't say we, Housing Kitsap is in charge of the waiting list council member. They have decided not to open the waiting list yet, there's still some criteria that needs to be hammered out. Our sense is that the waiting list will be opened shortly, but they're not ready quite yet. I have personally collected a list of about 50 people that have written to me directly to ask for notification when that waiting list is open. So if that is any indication, a lot of people are watching and waiting.
You know, I can't give a, Housing Kitsap has been a real partner. I mean, they have stepped up over and over and over again. Heather Blough, D Nail, the whole, the whole team of Freddie Larsius, all of them have been really helpful in all of these processes. I, I think you've, you've, you've found that true, right?
They have been outstanding partners.
Yeah.
And I certainly hope that this model of working with a housing authority to benefit from local ordinances that allow council to waive certain zoning restrictions, for that and many other reasons. This, this partnership is, is really terrific and I hope we continue to, to benefit in future projects from it. Um, I'll just do a quick slide here, because so much of our attention on H3 is focused on recovery. I thought it might be worth just taking a moment to talk about maybe our internal rationale for why we focus so many of our efforts on the Recovery Center. Overdose calls thankfully nationwide and both in Kitsap seem to be dropping in terms of fate fatalities. And that's because of, I think, the availability of Narcan. But the numbers are still pretty staggering. EMS in Kitsap County has responded to well over 300 calls last year related to opioid overdose and around 45 deaths. Again, the number seems to be on the decline, but it's, it's still awfully significant. I would bring to council's attention that for all of the attention that opioids rightfully get, our liquor or alcohol-related fatalities are greater and the calls related to liquor are greater. Were actually higher than the state average in terms of fatalities for 100,000 people in Kitsap County. Another reason we focus on recovery is because there has been a countywide increase in unsheltered homelessness. I was going over the most recent point in cap, time, uh, report that's put out by the county. There's a 19% jump in unsheltered homelessness since 2021 in Kitsap. The numbers in Paulsboro, of course, are smaller than in the rest of the county, but it's, it's 5% of the total and that number continues to rise as well. Interestingly, the number one self-reported factor when people are asked, why are you homeless? The number one factor that people say is health and mental health conditions. And when you're looking at other self-reported answers to the point and time count survey, over half of our unsheltered homeless population self-report substance use disorders. We are focusing on recovery in Paulsboro because we strongly believe that unsheltered homelessness must be addressed by addressing underlying health conditions. Talking to Amy at our Paulsboro Municipal Court this week about numbers in the court. Drug charges are plentiful in our court, roughly 70 drug cases in the last year or were projected to hit about 70 mark at the year mark. That's nearing a third of our docket here in Paulsboro. Virtually all people charged with drug crimes are qualifying for public defender services. So these are folks that are low income and have trouble accessing services. I would remind council something that mayor has brought to your attention many times. There's been a recent jump in our jail costs of 30% and the book and release rate has doubled. So again, why recovery? I just want to share the H3 thinking on this. It saves lives, it reduces homelessness and it certainly has the potential to reduce criminal justice costs in terms of what we're paying in our jail. Sources of H3 funding, we were very fortunate in 2024 and 2025 to receive generous funding from the Washington Sheriffs and Police Chiefs Association, the Healthcare Authority and the Olympic Community of Health. All of these grants expire mid-2025. I'll repeat that, all of our grants expire in the next few months. Council has been very generous and I think prescient in assigning 40% of our housing, one-tenth of 1% funds to behavioral health services. Your most recent budget included $269,000 for this year and $270,000 to support the Recovery Center. So if our grants end because of fiscal situations beyond our control, there, there is funding that you need available for our Recovery Center. But I, I just will stress that all of the conversations we're having about budget hit very hard on H3 and I'm optimistic but not at all certain that our grant funding is going to continue. I can assure council that that has not hampered our efforts to go after grants. We are working with the Healthcare Authority to extend funding for the Recovery Center now and working closely with the police department to get a new WASPIT grant in that was submitted yesterday. My final slide, we'll be working with Rob Gelder on a work plan over the next few months. Certainly will include the next phases for Nordic cottages. How are we working with Housing Kitsap to take care of folks that are living in our residence? Are we providing additional support services? What can we do at the Recovery Center? Because it's so close to support people that are living in the cottages. As mentioned before, there'll be a step housing needs assessment and plan presented to council in May. It was very helpful for me to hear that last presentation from our friends in the county. The home CDB grant process will be opening in June perhaps. So it would be great to work with council in May to take the results from our step housing assessment and decide with our partners on Bainbridge and in the county, if there might be a housing project we'd like to come together and apply for funding for. Always continuing to work the senior cares program, it's, it's small, but we're still serving about 10 seniors with phone buddy friendly assistance, having some really great interactions with Dan Shoemaker, our new emergency preparedness lead and figuring out how we can get ready for next cold weather shelter season and keep our folks at the Recovery Center safe in the event of an emergency. And finally, in terms of the Recovery Center itself, working with Rob to create a sustainability plan, assuming the worst about funding. What do we do if we need to pare back to make sure that we maintain services? In the event that Medicaid funding is cut and people are not able to access treatment services the way they have been for years? What are we doing at the Recovery Center to alleviate that, that pressure? Looking to improve alignment with our police department to make sure that our police navigator program is fully in sync with what's happening at the center. And finally, I'd like to start working with the court to be able to come back to the council to say, of all of the people that are court involved that are at the Recovery Center, here are the results that we see compared to a, a group of people that are not involved at the Recovery Center. We've gotten very good at reporting out on raw numbers. How many people come in, who are we connecting to services, who are we serving? I've yet to come to council and, and show you evidence that we're actually reducing criminal justice involvement. And I'd like very much to be able to do that by the, by the mid-year. Yep, and with that, I, I would just turn to, to Laura and ask if there's anything that you'd like to add or, or comment on.
Sure. I just wanted to say, I feel very humbled to be joining the H3 team and. I just wanted to say, I feel very humbled to be joining the H three team and believe in our staff at the Recovery Resource Center. They're making a huge impact, not only with the members that come in daily, but with our community. Moving from King County recently being in this field for several, several years, I know that this is important to Kitsap, not only now, but in the future. I hope we will continue to grow and make new connections in and around our community to help individuals in recovery and anyone that is in financial strain. Look forward to working with everybody.
So glad you're here.
Thank you. Thanks.
We've just got to find a
Yep, we find a sustainable funding source. You know, I mean, we got the one tenth of one percent, we do, but you know, I, I would want to build, I want to put that into physical infrastructure. That's what it was designed for. So we've just got to find a way to, you know, make sure you guys are funded. And, and be smarter. It's, it's on H three as well to come back to you to say, we have cost saving suggestions and we're working on that now. They're doing very important work and couldn't be couldn't be prouder of both of you. So thank you, thank you. Any questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just, I guess, more of a comment. Kim, I think the, the tracking numbers that you're giving us are really helpful and obviously that will be helpful. And reporting back to the grant funding organizations, how many people are being served and so forth. It might be a good idea in the future to, you know, to further drive home the point of some of these efforts and what they're saving, could be saving us in jail costs, criminal justice costs, you know? What, what, what is a thirty days at the jail cost us, you know? What, what does the court time cost us? And just even kind of flesh those numbers out some more might, might be helpful, you know, I think.
I know the jail costs went up a whole bunch this year. I don't, I think I'm Two twenty five? I was gonna say two thirty, something like that, night.
And, and maybe we talked about this, Mayor, but it just sort of reminded me, Judge Tolman, of course, has announced his retirement. I believe it's at the end of April. Is that right? Well, just can you kind of update the community on what the process for?
We have an application out right now and we're taking, I think the interview process is in the next couple of years, couple of weeks. I'm I can't tell you what date his last, I think it's April one is his last date.
April seventh.
April seventh, yeah, April seventh. So yeah, we're moving right forward. We have three applications as of today for the position, so.
Do you want to mention the interview panel decision? I think that's quite wonderful. I'm gonna steal your thunder if you don't. I, I think.
You mean for the, the judicial appointment?
Yeah.
And I, it's great that we actually have an opportunity to pretty common to have a couple of different panels of individuals kind of reviewing applicants that, but one of them will include not only a district court judge, one of our city council members, but also a member of our H three team who has a direct connection to the court system and I think we'll be able to provide a wonderful human perspective to the conversation.
I just want to tie in to the idea of cost savings, right? And that's just to the city, right? So and I, I, I know there was a Seattle Times article recently where the, we're seeing a higher uptick in under twenty five use, drug use, particularly fentanyl use because it's so cheap. And then that would precipitate K through twelve dropout rates increasingly as well. So when people, I, what I would love for people to understand is when we invest in preventing people from getting hooked on drugs and dropping out of school. Research from two thousand and seven, let me pull it up right here. Saves taxpayers two hundred and ninety two thousand throughout that person's life if they, if you prevent them from dropping out of K through twelve. Because once you drop out of K through twelve, it's very unlikely that, you know, their chances of incarceration and all these other things skyrocket. So not just saving the city money with, you know, that, those numbers, but also, yeah, finding out that data would be really helpful because then we can, I don't know, if we're re-appropriating and, and, you know, yeah, making a case to use those funds to keep funding more of those programs. So it's really really beneficial to the taxpayer.
Thank you, council member. I wish we were doing more for youth. There are liability issues around serving young people that we keep hitting against. I'm, I'm determined to figure out a way, but I'm happy to say that one of the many benefits of partnering with the Saquamish Tribe is that they bring in their own offerings. They're starting a youth group in a few weeks and have invited all of our staff and members to refer folks into their youth group. So it's really through partnerships that we're able to do things that maybe as a city are difficult on our own.
I know you know this, but it may not be as clear. When you're helping adults, it's reducing the likelihood that their children are exposed to the, you know, environments where they end up becoming users. So you, you, you are indirectly helping children not go down the same path that their parents do when you help those parents.
Okay, so any more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you for your good work.
You're still up. I stay.
Yes.
Okay, so now we're on to item F, which is social community service agreement with Patty Velez to provide Spanish translation services. This should be straightforward. I think so. So when I came to council requesting funds to pay for Patty to provide translation services back in the latter part of twenty twenty four, I said I'd come back in March and give you an update and see where you wanted to go next. As council knows, we created a number for Spanish speaking individuals to call in and get information about Polesbo government and community issues, posted the number, even have a nice graphic about the number. The number has not been used. There was an initial bump when we released information about the number, but has really fallen off to virtually no use at all. However, Patty's services have very much been used and appreciated in other ways that I hadn't anticipated when I first came to council. She has worked with the Police Department to translate documents. She is working with the clerk and I think eventually will become a Spanish speaking notary that will be working here in Polesbo. At the Recovery Center, we haven't had use for translation services yet, but I anticipate in the future she'll be very important since we are seeing a yeah, a, a serious spike in Spanish speakers that are coming into our court and using our Recovery Center. So what I've done is I've, I've amended the current agreement and put it in your packets tonight to use the remaining funds in the contract to pay for things other than responding to phone calls. Translation services, Spanish services as they come up in the city, there's, there's more flexibility in the contract. Consent agenda, we just want to use it a little bit. Let me ask one more question before we wrap up, just about money. The, the original contract was three thousand dollars. At this moment, we spent about sixteen hundred dollars, so there's about fourteen hundred dollars left. We could just extend the contract without a budget amendment and use it up and then come back to council for an additional ask. Or I could open this up for council to allocate another few thousand dollars to, to run the contract a little bit further than it will with the current three thousand.
I think it's very warranted to have the ability to have somebody with you in the face to face. We're a small town. You know, there's one degree of separation between all of us. And not surprising the phone's not there. It's really the, the face to face. So I, I support enabling that ability because what about ten percent of our population? It's Hispanic. It, it makes sense. This is a very it, no, it makes sense to make this investment to be able to make sure that they get connected to services and we help.
So we'll put a budget amendment together to, to repurpose and continue to increase the funding. Would it be appropriate to ask for a suggestion on a mount, Mayor? Yeah, go ahead. So just looking for guidance, the, the current contract is three thousand. There's about fifteen hundred left. Is there a, a figure that anyone would like to suggest for the, the new contract?
What would it take us to get through December?
Yeah, I would do it through the end of the year. It makes sense.
And then we set it up to approach it with the mid-year update to our BIA Nia budget so that we put it in there.
Thank you, council. I would say five thousand dollars will carry us through the end of the year.
Don't have to pull off type head.
Yeah.
We'll work it out. Okay, we'll figure it out.
Yeah, with the goal being, let's get us through to, to the end of the summer.
Okay, good. Are we good?
Yeah, and I was just gonna say, if we find that we have, you know, we're looking for additional things she can help with. I, I think our website would be sort of an area of, of help.
All of our communication.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, she's a graphic designer as well as translator and so, you know, maybe there's some things that she can do, you know, to, to with, with the website as well. So I'm just saying.
So go for it.
And Rhiannon could probably use some help. I don't know. Is that a good idea, Rhiannon, or no?
That's an entirely different discussion with, with website.
Okay. Oh, I guess what I was heading towards there was providing some translation of documents that are on the website, I guess, is where I was, my starting point, okay?
I'm hearing, go forward, fix it and we'll take care of it. Okay, all right. All right, so now we're on to continued questions and concerns of the council, I think. I kind of like having just four of you. I think this is
We should note for the record, Mayor. Is it this four or just four? Good question. The Doug caucus. It seemed important to our colleague Deputy Mayor Stern that it be known that he is away on council business tonight, so rather than sick or vacation. So for the record, council Deputy Mayor Stern is away on council business, city business. And that is why he is absent this evening. So thank you, Ed, for your, for your good work and so forth. Thank you.
Okay, any other continued questions and comments from the council? Okay, future agenda items. Rhiannon, anything? Okay. Continued public comment. Any public comment this evening? Seeing none. Mayor and council comments. Any further comments from the council tonight? Are we done? Okay, then entertain a motion for adjournment, please.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are heard.